Oh, me? Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Public service utilities to water. And I believe we have one item on the agenda. The CDTAC common ordinance and oversight. And I believe Jonathan. Floor is yours. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm John Sirch, Director of Marketing. CDTAC here. Wanted to give you a quick overview of the regional ordinance we've been working on over the last better part of a year. And we continue to work with the area municipalities who have cab companies within the borders and obviously at the train station in Montseulier and the airport. So very quick slideshow and overview. So some of the background. So the law has given CDTAC authority to kind of provide this function. Remember? Back in 2016. Our municipality municipalities have the exact same ordinance with the concept and the idea behind this legislation. Wanted to provide one clear, consistent set of rules across all major municipalities in the capital region. And this goes in the form of licensing, regulation, and oversight. So it's changing. There's additional components that will allow for better tracking capabilities, such as an owner's license requirement as well as some enhanced insurance options that have been put on the table as well. Talking to personal liability type levels. The enrollment in New York State license event notification system. So anyone driving a taxi cab affiliated with these cab companies will have to be entered into the system that's trackable across all of New York State. And written suspension and relocation protocol. Basically, with this ordinance, what we've tried to do and what has been tried to occur here is to line up everything consistently across all these municipalities. Everyone has had different ordinances. That here was the strongest. So we're working by the proof here prior to CDTAC working on this ordinance as well. So the benefits, pretty standard. I can see here a big oversight of owners and drivers, consistent regulations, reduce the confusion. We all know about the cabs being unable to go between municipalities if they're going to Montseulier. The regional approach should help communication at all levels. Less burden for companies looking to grow their program, whether by picking up in Sarasota, whether by picking up and dropping on all the municipalities. Having all the areas available to your organization and business gives you that much more growth potential. Streamline the application process. That being in one centralized location. Every one of the owners will know where to get it. One of the drivers will know where to get it. They'll be able to assist in making sure that they want to kind of a clearinghouse for that. And decrease the access for taxi customers. Obviously, ride sharing is in town. CDTAC works with every type of mobility, the particular customer groups as well that are used to working with taxi companies. But they have a good relationship. And so what could happen in looking ahead, CDTAC has the ability to work with you in centralized action processing, license down insurance, customer commentary components. So we provide quick and direct feedback to the companies themselves, to the city council. Obviously, busting silos, increasing coordination on all levels should make it more consistent. Let a company know what they're here for in Skynyrd, Albany, Rensselaer, Colony, and Saratoga Springs, as well as lay the groundwork for what we see as hopefully a unified. So if you're a cab company, you have the ability to purchase that and all six of these units will be able to pick up. So that's the power point. I don't know if there's anything additional in the ordinance that's been discussed here or read through, but certainly I just wanted to ask you a few questions.
Any questions? Ms. Porfirio.
You said there's going to be an increase in cost for insurance.
You're raising the levels of commercial insurance.
So that's going to increase the cost that you have to pay a bit higher premium. So do you know about what percentage of increase it would be for a premium?
The increase is to a level of 0.00. That's not the actual percentage of increase. I don't have a specific number for you. But it's for the consistency purposes. What we've seen in the work back there, working with some cab companies, we do have insurance properly. Some have individual insurance. Some at certain levels of commercial insurance. So it's in a consistent process.
So are you asking for the baseline insurance or for higher levels?
There's a baseline commercial. So there's individual now, personal now. This is established as baseline.
Do you know what that cost is?
It's in the ordinance. I want to say 350. It's going to be directly related to the insurance.
The cost of 350, 350,000?
Well, the coverage level. Yeah, we wouldn't do that. I don't think that's what the actual coverage.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out what the cost would be. So if it's in the ordinance, I can look that up.
Yeah, definitely it is.
The cost doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, I'm checking.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That's going to vary by the different cab company, by what their claim rate is, other factors, depending on the carrier is. I'm not sure you're ever going to be able to quite get that exact number.
Yeah, probably likely to get 20 cabs or five. Track record as a cab company. So what the idea again, the number, consistency of having an expectation. If it was a customer when you get in, cab company has that insurance. If this is what we have, that's what you're trying to establish.
Ms. Bravo.
Of course, my first question was how much is going to cost off the city? And I know that CDTAC is still fine tuning that. But I think they're looking at it coming in somewhere around 10, 2,000.
I don't want to give a flat number, but I think the idea here is there are services that we want to help take off control. It's just the fact that something that the city doesn't want. The police department's amount of time processing people for, including the taxi people, that is something that we have the ability to assist with and ask for the cost of, processing, setting up fingerprints, those types of activities. They're not money CDTAC obviously make. They're expensive. Again, designing for this consistency. You're getting a certain cab, getting a following level driver because of all these things are now all spelled out in your own cost of six weeks.
I thought it was going to be set up so that the city would lose some revenue. We're not going to pay for those services. The individual cab companies will pay for that on the application of the driver or the cab.
I think whichever variation winds up working. I don't think it's CDTAC or any of those needs specifically to cover the city. I think those are just needs to be those costs. However, we all work together to do that. Because again, the ordinance is just a high level view of how we want these programs to work. We want to get into a conversation about how the partnership between the city and Skynyrd and CDTAC is going to work. There's certainly variables.
I know right now Sergeant Harrigan does the lion's share of the work with regard to taxi cabs. And he felt when I spoke with him that this would be very beneficial and allow him to do some more regulatory checks rather than the administrative side of it. So maybe on the next cycle, we want to have Sergeant Harrigan come in and talk to us about what he sees with regard to having CDTAC as a partner in this regard.
People work so hard on enforcement between all the cities. So we raise partnership. It seems to be on the same page. How each individual municipality runs dictates how we actually do that.
So Michael, would it be based on the number of medallions by any chance? I mean, the city of Skynyrd shouldn't be expected to pay the same fee that City of Albany is paying, correct? I mean, are you still asking me work ahead of time?
We are in the work in progress, I think. Obviously, this doesn't exist yet. We're looking to get it all together once kind of in agreement on the fact that the idea of the ordinance is correct. Then we can start to drill down to individual level of what's required. What the city wants. What is law enforcement? What would be better off with CDTAC? Once you start to get and finalize those concepts then and cash, no one will do it themselves.
Ms. Bravo.
What municipalities have already committed?
So far, Saratoga Springs and Troy have opened up. I got my general counsel. CDTAC's general counsel is over all right now. So obviously, the idea was to try to do as many cases as we could prior to the end of the year. But it's a process. It takes what it takes.
So this is the ordinance you're looking at for us to adopt? That's before us deceive?
It has been adopted also by Sergeant.
And Troy. And what was their process? I mean, how did they go about that?
Pretty similar. We went through kind of the background work that Lauren Bailey, our mobility manager, had been doing along with. We had a meeting going on once we were out. Kind of getting all the things fleshed out that would be fair for all six municipalities communities. And then getting into a little bit more deal down here.
So you've had all six minutes? All the folks at the same table? Okay, because I think that's important for everybody to be at the same table with the same conversation rather than coming to us individually so we can hear their concerns and our concerns at the same time. It'd be important to this council at least.
Yeah, and again, I would say that the idea behind the ordinance, it's important because there's been months and months of months of feedback with everybody to get it to a place where it's fair.
So who are the other four there left? Skynyrd, Albany.
Skynyrd, Albany, Colony. These are in Colony, the airport. And that's where they're at.
Sorry. I was just going to be involved in it for a long time. Well, and we went and met with CDTAC and Lauren was mainly sent the legislation to us twice. And I know I sent edits in. And it was mainly based on Skynyrd's kind of framework.
It was, yes.
There are other municipalities, and I don't know about Saratoga or Troy. You know, other municipalities weren't either. So it's a pretty significant change. Were either one of those are either municipalities?
Not in that way. We're also coordinated with them. That's what we should, as part of the ordinance, that argues how it can be available or cost effective way to.
So all the rates and fares are going to be the same throughout the capital region, is what you're telling me?
It would be able to be based on just a plastic sheet of this fact that we're based on your system minus a change from up to our 28th mile or 10th mile.
Because originally, I think you had two different rates.
Yeah, I think as time went on, we realized that what the airport was doing was to practice both in Skynyrd. So we tried to take the best of everything down. Literally, it's mostly coming out of the structure.
So we haven't come to a conclusion yet as far as what the cost is going to be to the city itself, correct?
Yeah, I don't anticipate that. We're trying to figure out what is going to be required again. The city has the ability to keep most all of these services internally and not have that change in any way. The only book law enforcement, the police department, seems that there might be some efficiencies if these are. And if we can all coordinate and agree on what it takes to get those accomplished.
Now, Mr. Mayor, you said that that was...
We're not going to pay it.
Okay, that's great.
Right. We'll pay right now. So some of the fees that we collect will just go to CDTAC. We're going to transition to this format, which would ensure a smooth implementation where Skynyrd was really the leader in this in terms of having the best ordinance, having the best enforcement, best overall policy. So now it's just one rate structure that the cab comes using. Wish I had to just summarize this whole problem. It's sheer a missee. People coming into the capital region now, whether they're coming into GE, coming into local boundaries, Anatech, Albany, they would pay one rate from the airport to their hotel, place where they're doing business. They would take the exact same route back. And they could pay 50% more one way, double the other way. It just convoluted in the quality of the cabs. There was a wide variance in it. So you had some that collected well in the region and others were really embarrassing. But this platform, be to shift some of that revenue to CDTAC so that they could again administer that. And that cost the city not going to run any money here. So there's a cost that would work better for the residents and individuals taking cabs. So it's connected.
I think that's why I want to give you an argument. It was A, I would technically, B, one.
And then again, this original proposal came from the governor's office, I believe, right? To the pilot for the capital region to pilot this?
It was allowed passing.
Right.
It needed to be passed in the legislature. The first one in New York State had been given some.
Right.
I want to first here because either some, as we get towards the end here, how does that work? Maybe we should do that. I think it's a partnership to make sure it works smoothly. And I think as the mayor said, it's about the customer.
Agreed.
This was John McDonald's leadership in the Assembly Capital Region Chamber. In CDTAC, looking at the problem best to bring some standardization, quality of service into that transportation component. The CDTAC already had a lot of the statutory structure which I should be able to do within the capital region. So that's been the path that's been followed and spent by 20 more months.
Yeah, it's simple if somebody is sending us an email and letting us know they have substantial experience. It allows us to very quickly get back to them. Have them back and need to give it to us. We call it as well. There's now things that we can do like that that we're trying to institute. There's listing everything, cab, cab, where's your notes? So there's been some kind of baby steps forward to getting consistent, clear message with the service, services, residents. This is kind of that.
Very good.
So just a question in general. Do you feel that we have enough information on this to move this resolution forward and vote on this tonight? Or do you feel that we need to do further inquiry?
I mean, again, Ms. Bravo, we presented through the meetings. CDTAC is very good.
I'm in favor of this. I would ask the council's favor.
So you had a concern about meeting with the sergeant?
No, it's not a concern. I just thought he would be able to give us information on why he would feel it would be beneficial to him and things of that nature. But it's not key. It's just more information for us. I mean, I've been in touch and working and having meetings and editing for, I don't know, months and months and months and months. When did we first meet them? I don't even remember. So I have no, I don't have any concern. My only concern is the cost. I had a little bit of a different answer than the mayor provided. But I'm sure for you the information that I'm not, you know. And to be honest with you, even if there was a cost associated, it was a cost that we would recoup having. There's some time to read up.
Yeah, and again, it's all about customer satisfaction.
No, I think this is important.
We talked about that for how long, especially with our casino now. Again, that's a lot of tenants. Their first introduction to the city or the area of the capital region, getting into a cab. I think it's important that we have CDTAC overseeing it. They're a great group. And your apps are tremendous, incidentally. Your apps that are there are very, very nice. They're very user friendly, if you would. So I think it's all a plus to be partnering with these folks.
They have training component to drivers.
Yeah, it just brings a little more teeth to everything that kind of already existed. It makes it more regionalized. Make more money as businesses, have better opportunities as residents.
I have one other question regarding that hack license. I see that BCJS is going to be doing some of the background checks. And so in terms of the drivers, I'm pretty sure that some of the people that currently drive may have had some interaction with them. So does that mean that people have had any interaction with them or definitely not have gone over the limits of drive cap under this?
I'm not sure exactly which line you're referring to in yours. I would think that if they had an issue outside that related to women working and driving, they met all the needs of whoever the police department they're involved with, of course. I don't think, but I think that's probably more related to making sure that they are able to manage what is in the hack license. They're able to answer positively to all the questions that a lot of the hackers more so than you ever.
I don't know the questions in the hack license. So I don't know what they are.
They're pretty standard type questions for that type of work.
Excuse me, Matt, and I ask this gentleman who knows of. Is there, he's a cab driver, owner?
You're an owner?
I see a bunch of problems. But I don't know about this.
I just asked one specific. Is whether you have a criminal background a question on the hack license?
Yes, that's on me. That's on the application.
Okay, thank you.
You can't have no convictions. We're going to 18 months.
Okay, thank you. So that was what I was wondering.
So can I get a motion? A second?
Is this, excuse me, is this a motion for a resolution supporting this ordinance or adopting the ordinance in our code?
Adopting it. Because it's not going to cost us. I mean, I think the mayor has put forth that it's not going to cost the city anything. I think it's going to help us get to where we want to go.
This is replacing the chapter in the code. What is outlined here is a fee structure. Maybe there's a difference. My last conversation with the concealer was that CDTAC was going to collect that money doing the administrative function. So we're not going to then be billed for CDTAC for something where they're processing the license down and the other things that CDTAC gets that money.
That's the same earlier. If the city decides to have the control or continue to control, we have to have that conversation.
Ms. Bravo.
I feel like there's too many variables for us to adopt this into our code right now. But I'm like saying, you know, maybe a resolution commitment or a resolution of, you know, partnership or something like that. I feel I'm, I still think, you know, it's a work in progress, right? So what have the other municipalities done?
Well, the other two have chatted so far. So they passed it.
But they passed that you were going to partner with you.
Yes, I believe that they passed the acceptance of the ordinance. There's determination from city level on how you want to handle certain of the activities that are currently in the city.
More of a support.
I mean, it's built to give you all the flexibility in case you don't like the way something is written or is a perv.
It can be changed.
Ms. Bravo.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I feel like if we're going to consider that, that everybody needs to take the time to actually review the ordinance. If we're going to vote to put this into the code, I think it would recoup us to take a cycle and really review it and have any questions that we have answered. Because once it's adopted and proposed, then it's going to be, you know, appearing, blah, blah. It's going to take us, you know, a lengthy process to do any changes. So let them change the ordinance. But I think everybody should just have all the information they feel comfortable having. I think it's a big, big decision to just have this information put in front of you and then just vote, put it into our code. But that's...
So if we do a supportive resolution tonight, will that meet the needs of CDTAC as far as?
We don't have specific needs. Ideally, you want the pass. We get all work together. A lot of the cities change the downy process until January 1, rather, because that's what we're scheduled. That's the idea trying to get this together for January 1st.
So that would mean that as of January 1, you would do the downings for the taxi cab?
If we were all on that. That's definitely not enough time then to make this decision.
You're not going to have everybody.
And again, could.
Today's the 18th. You're not going to get Rensselaer and those other folks in there either. I can't see that happening. Is this our medallion rate right now? Is this what we have it set at, the 500 now? Yes. That is, I think it's 500. Okay, because I know John has it. So we don't need to put that at 100. Okay.
Scott, one more thing. Are your medallions being issued until April? Not January 1st.
Thank you for that information. But only for us.
So we probably should hold this in, right?
Yeah, we should hold this.
What I guess the purpose of it is to call for a public hearing, which will take you two cycles.
Take it through. It starts the process.
It flushes them.
Do that, get, again, increase some. You have to do that one way or the other. And that will allow for some public comment. My understanding was that it was going to be in that first year, what I'd call a year of transition. So you have different, as the gentleman just pointed out, where medallion's been issued is going to be recognized through whatever period it was issued for. That's going to be modified. And other municipalities have similar...
Due dates.
Well, causing inconsistencies to transition over the first period of time into this final format, be fully administered by CDTAC.
Yeah, that gets a bit of time. Keep in mind what it's going to take to get six municipalities, get them to the board.
Yeah, you know, we're on board, yeah.
You're probably looking at 18 to get things in motion at 19.
To start, right?
Well, I would just start.
It's transitional.
So January 1st will all be in the same place. I mean, that would be a good idea, right? To get them to move and call for a public hearing at least.
If it's time, get public input. Yeah, we can hear the public companies. So I make a motion for a public hearing.
I'll second for a public hearing. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll call for a public hearing on the CDTAC partnership.
Very good.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, all.
Yep, Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Yep, Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Before public services. Okay. Have a second? Vote in favor. Okay, for adjourned.
I had a call to order in the committee, and we have one of them on the agenda, and that's deferred compensation plan, contract renewal. I don't see a surprise, I assume it's Mr. E.
Where's your, where's your binders, Mr. Eman? Where's your binders? You can't leave without your binders, and you grab those binders.
Somebody wants to grab.
Good afternoon. Evening, council, president, mayor, we have for you tonight a recommendation from the Chicago Compensation Committee to authorize the marriage of private contracts for both of you, make sure a lot of times it's a mass mutual. Our current contract expires December 31st, 2017. Just to give you a little understanding of the process, the city sent our request for both of us on September 20th, 2017. The RFPs came in on November 1st with seven firms expressing interest in our business. On November 16th, we made a net for presentation from all seven interested firms, the committee asked questions of all the presenters present. On December 4th, the committee met, discussed the merits of each proposal, and decided that they want to retain with the vote, mass neutral, and nationwide services. So I humbly ask your favorable consideration.
So these are the same companies that we're currently dealing with?
Yes.
And who comprises this, the committee, the deferred compensation committee?
The committee comprises the union leadership, as well as finance, finance.
All right, very good.
Any questions?
No, nationwide is on our side.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion. So maybe by two, there, certainly by this, this, I'll vote in favor. So anything else to come, people, by his.
My Kamal Shetou, adjourned. Second.
Goodness, they're by two, there, and I was in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I have called to order the committee of city development planning, we have a ceremonial resolution in front of us, and Ms. Portiff.
Yes, there's a nominee, his name's Trevor Luciani, he's with the 2017, or is the 2017, this is the year for the Boys and Girls Club of Connectivity, heard him speak in April, then again more recently, and he's just done a number of things in the community, so he's completing his year, as he's a year, I just wanted to recognize all the things he's done, not only for Boys and Girls Club, but City of Connectivity, this is, this is himself, wanting to bring it forward.
Just a recent article, and then does that for T U just last week, and I guess he finished second in the state?
He did, yeah, you'll have, there's a draft of the resolution in your packet.
Oh, there we go, all right. Outstanding, very, very good. And he'll be available for the, maybe the 26th?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Motivaren, Ms. Portiff, on fair say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Anything else to come before our, the committee of city development planning, and I'll go call for motion to recess? Or, you want to go to the bottom, you have one more thing, or you want to go right into executive session?
We can always come out of executive session if the mayor, if it's not something that.
Okay, so, so let's do that then, so I will need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the sale of properties.
Come on.
And Ms. Portiff, second by Mr. Motivaren, on fair say aye. We are in executive session.